Covid nineteen pandemic, the meeting um done uh virtually, you can call in. Or uh use the link to um with the smart smartphone or capital device. Um so we just get started in the agenda. Um see nothing for continued business, so we'll we'll jump to new business. Uh ZB dash twenty twenty-one dash three, a variant. The applicant is Ryan and Ossler. Uh the property is located at thirty-two uh Womerset Street. Um. Mister Ossler is looking to renovate an existing existing building at thirty-two Womerset. Into a three-unit residential structure. The building currently has two residential units. Uh subject property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. It requires special per se per article twelve point one C to span a residential structure. The three dwelling units, a variant per section six point one for relief. From off-street parking requirements and a variant per section approximately one for minimum open space. Per dwelling unit, minimum lot size, minimum frontage, minimum front yard setback, minimum. Side yard setback, minimum rear yard setback and minimum lot area per dwelling unit. And any other release required under the low um zoning ordinance. Um. Do we get, is 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 the applicant here this evening?
Yes, uh good evening Vice Chair Peck and members of the board. For the record, my name is John Geary of the Law Offices of Gary and Gary LLP, thirty-two Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I represent Ryan Ossler, the petitioner here and the owner of thirty-two Womerset Street. Mister Ossler is a low police officer and started a new position within the department tonight. So unfortunately, he cannot be here with me tonight, but he uh he has asked me to move forward without his presence. So this application involves a request for variances pursuant to five point one. And sections six point one point four C and six point one point one oh of the City of Lowell zoning ordinance. Thirty-two Womerset Street is a three is a three-story residential dwelling containing approximately two thousand five hundred ninety-three square feet of land. The property is located in the traditional neighborhood multifamily zoning district. The neighborhood consists of a mix of single, two-family and multifamily properties. As well as many small businesses which service and support the neighborhood. I've provided the board with a site plan of the property as well as floor plans uh with pictures of the elevations of the property. So in addition to the request for variances from this board, we'll also be requesting. Uh a special permit from the planning board in order to allow for the conversion of the property from a two-family to a three-family. The dimensionally relief that we are requesting tonight pursuant to five point one. Is for a minimum open space per dwelling unit, minimum lot size, minimum frontage. Minimum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback and minimum rear yard setback. Basically all of the dimensional requirements for the zoning. But all of which are pre-existing non-conformity. Since we are also proposing to make the third unit a legal unit, we are requesting relief from the minimum lot area per dwelling unit. The lot area per dwelling unit for the TMS zoning district is four thousand, which means. That there should be a minimum four thousand square feet of land for each unit. So for a three-family dwelling, that would require that we have at least twelve thousand square feet of land. The subject property as I mentioned consists of two thousand five hundred ninety-three square feet of land. The current pre-existing non-conforming lot area per dwelling unit for this property as a two-family. Is short by five thousand four hundred and seven square. With the addition of a third unit, the applicant will need relief of nine thousand four hundred and seven square feet from the from the ordinance. Given that the property was was once a legal three-family with the same square footage and the property is consistently been used as a three-family without issue. And is located in a dense neighborhood with numerous multifamily homes existing without conforming lot area per dwelling unit ratios. There would appear to be no adverse impact in granting this relief. In addition, we are also seeking relief pursuant to section six point one for off-street parking, which I'll elaborate on in a few minutes. The current layout of the property consists of one unit per floor. First and second floor units are very similar, both contain three bedrooms and one bath. The third floor contains two bedrooms and one bath. Based upon what we can determine from the records, this property would appear. That the property was a legal three-family for many years prior to nineteen ninety-seven. Nineteen ninety-seven, the then-owner for the property converted from a three-family to a two-family. I'm guessing that that was done to save money on real estate taxes, but I have no way of of knowing whether that was the case or not. However, we do know that the property appears to have been maintained as a three-family all along and that there are currently tenants occupying the property. Mister Ossler purchased this property in September of two thousand nineteen. At that time, he assumed that he was purchasing a three-family and paid a purchase price that valued the property as a three-family. Mister Ossler recently had a storage backup into the basement of the property. And in connection with the cleanup of that incident, the building inspector of this area had to inspect the property. It was at that time that Mister Ossler found out that the property was a legal two-family and not a three-family. Mister Ossler has been working closely with Commissioner Fuller's office. With regard to the legal status of the property. And I've included a copy of the letter from Jose Nigron, Senior Building Inspector of the City, which provides some history on the property and supports applicant petition. Convert from a two-family to a three-family. I'm also in receipt of the planning department comments that are within the project summary, which we all received. And I'd like to take a few minutes to go through those comments now. So comment number one speaks to the application before us tonight, which I've just elaborated on. Comment number two, comment number two speaks to the open space requirement. This property does not have the required usable open space of fifteen hundred square feet for three units, or five hundred square feet per unit. But we have roughly five hundred to six hundred square feet of usable open space to the rear of the property, which is pre-existing. This is a paved area behind the structure which is used for grilling and outdoor eating when weather permits. So although it's not a very large area, it does get quite a bit of use by the tenants. Um since it's the area where they gather in the nicer weather. Comments three, four and five all speak to the parking requirements associated with this application. There are a total of eight bedrooms in three units, so the code would dictate that we have that we provide six off-street parking spaces. In this case, we have three dimensionally non-compliant off-street parking spaces. Uh in the driveway that are that are used in the driveway. The driveway parking is non-compliant in terms of setbacks from the structure and likely the dimensions of each space. In addition to the three three driveway parking spaces, the applicant has a city blue parking decal. In front of the property, which we know cannot be used to offset our parking requirements, but it is used by the tenants. Ultimately, we are seeking relief to allow for the three dimensionally non-compliant parking spaces in the driveway to continue to exist. As well as relief for the three spaces that we do not have. The board should also note that the parking situation at this property has existed for quite some time as currently configured without any issue. Comment six makes note that there is no green space on the property, which is true, but not uncharacteristic of this neighborhood. As I mentioned previously, there is usable open space to the rear of the property, which is taken advantage of by the tenants when weather permits. The comments suggest that parking be prevented in this open area, in this open space behind the structure. My client doesn't allow the tenants to park in that area as it would actually be very difficult to maneuver a car. In and out of that that area because of the angle. Uh and would be happy to condition to to add a condition to the approval stating the same. Within comment number six, section D, the staff suggests that if there is no use for the asphalt in the backyard, the applicant should create open space. And I assume that means greens, open green space. But as I mentioned earlier, the tenants do use the asphalt area for outdoor grilling, eating and socializing. My clients can, my client considered the recommendation of converting this green this area to green space. But because the space is so small, it doesn't get a lot of sunlight and gets a lot of use by the tenants. He anticipates that it will be very difficult to maintain any grass in that area and would likely result in a very muddy backyard. That would be less useful than it currently is. Comment number seven speaks to the fencing on the property. There's only one type of fencing associated with thirty-two Womerset Street. It's a wooden fence that runs along the rear of the property and juts back into the house on the uh northwest side of the lot. The chain link fence that's mentioned or shown depicted in the comment section. Uh is associated with the lot to uh associated with the home to the south east of this lot. My client will uh needless to say, continue to maintain his fence. Comment number eight speaks to the requirement that we obtain a special permit from the planning board. As I said, we're on the planning board agenda for March fifteenth for that purpose. Comment number nine points out that the application aligns with the with the intent of the TMS zoning district and supports the city. Sustainable Low Twenty Twenty-five Plan by increasing the city's housing stock. The staff also points out that the neighborhood includes a mix of single, two-family and multifamily properties. I've also included for the board's review a co- uh a few copies of GIS maps. Which detail all the existing two, three and multifamily properties in the vicinity of this property. So with all that said, I would suggest that that a hardship does exist to support our request for variances. And given that this property was once a legal three-family with no change to the square footage. And the property has consistently been used as a three-family without issue. And is located in a dense neighborhood with numerous similar multifamily homes. The relief sought by Mister Ossler can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good or without nullifying or substantially derogating. From the intent of the zoning. So at this point, I'll turn it back to the board, but I'm happy to answer any questions of the board members or the public. Thank you.
Uh thank, thank you, uh Councilman Gary, for your narrative of the the project. Um so so now we're gonna open up the hearing to the public. Um anyone wishing to speak in favor? Those petition in favor? In favor? Seeing that uh that portion of the public hearing is closed. Um anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, seeing that portion of the public hearing is closed. Uh we're gonna open up comments questions to the board now. Uh the chair recognizes uh Mister Proko. Mister Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, Mister Vice Chairman, uh and uh thank you, uh Councilman uh Gary. Um if I knew you were gonna give such a stark performance, I would have, you've answered all my questions again.
Glad I could help him.
Yeah. Uh uh actually, the the question was about the green space, which which again, uh you you did. You did provide a response that it it will be used. Um because on the Google Maps, it looks like there was a tree back there and we didn't know if. It was, you know, part of that property, which would have, you know, alluded to uh some reasons.
Right, there is a tree, it's right on the property line, uh and it's it has to be a healthy tree and will continue to be there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I also, I looked at Mister Nigron's um letter and and uh again, I. I saw that he just suggested some, you know, minor uh maintenance work, you know, electrical work and uh. Fire protections and stuff like that, and I'm assuming Mister Ossler will be taking care of that as well.
He will, and we're happy if you want, if you like to add that as a condition of approval, we're happy to comply with that. He's he certainly is going to, he has worked well with the building department and will continue to do that.
Okay, all right, perfect. Um I I I don't have any any issues or any more questions, so so I'll pass it on. Thank you, Mister Vice Chairman, thank you, Mister Gary.
Thank you.
Uh thank you, Mister Proko. Uh the the chair recognizes Mister Brier, uh Mister Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, uh my question is to Attorney Gary. Uh Mister Gary, when is the planning board scheduled to hear this?
Uh a week from tonight, the fifteenth.
Okay. Um. Is the building currently being utilized as a three-family?
It is, and it has been, it has been for, as you know, it it. It was converted in nineteen ninety-seven from a three-family to a two-family. And there's no no apparent reason why. Uh my guess is that the then-owner probably wanted to save on real estate taxes, but it appears to have always been used as a three-family.
When did your client purchase the property?
In uh September twenty-seven nineteen, two thousand nineteen. Just a couple of years.
And then, right, and then you said there was an incident with the some sewage and that's when.
Yes, just recently. Just recently had a storage backup that uh required that he he demolished. Some portions of the basement, which by the way, the ba- when he bought the property, the basement was finished. It appeared to be an illegal unit which wasn't being used, but my client demolished that area and it's a nice clean. This unfinished basement right now, but as a result of that. That uh incident that the property, the building department had to come in and inspect what he was doing. They went through the entire house and they checked the records and determined at that time that. You know, it's although it's it's got three tenants in it, it's a legal two-family, not a three-family. And they suggested that Ryan uh petition the board to correct that.
Right, so that's.
Why we're here.
Right, so that's essentially why you're here, your your client wants to do the right thing. And he wants to make everything legal.
Been very proactive in in doing the right thing.
Right, so um. If this conversion is to take place or a which, well, not a conversion, because it's it's actually already three units.
It is, there are three different.
Nothing's gonna be done, right, okay.
Nothing's gonna be done except for the safety code requirements.
All right, and the remaining, there'll be six total bedrooms, correct?
No, a total of eight bedrooms, so three, three and two.
Okay, what, am I, am I um? I'm reading here uh from the comments. Number three. It says uh three A, the applicant proposes to include six total bedrooms between the three units.
Correct, that that comment is incorrect, though.
Oh, okay.
Refer to my narrative, I had I had uh mentioned it was eight bedrooms.
All right, I apologize for that oversight. So, but 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 once again, as the structure is currently. As it currently sits, there are eight bedrooms, correct? Nothing, nothing's added.
Nothing's being changed at all to the to the floor plan of any of them.
Thank you, Mister Gary, thank you, Mister Gary, no further, no further questions, thank you.
Uh tha- thank you, Mister Brier. Uh the chair recognizes Mister Norobe, Mister Norobe, the floor is yours, sir.
So, Mister Vice Chair and uh Attorney Gary. So as far as the safety requirements for this unit, um. Has the city determined that there's no need for a sprinkler system or anything of that nature, it's just fire?
That's right, just just the uh safety issues that were mentioned in the um in the letter from uh from Inspector uh Nigron.
Yeah, because sometimes they they require, you know, three-family if you're going from two to three, but I guess. Since it was an existing three-family, I I guess there's no need, maybe that's.
Right, and I think the sprinkler would only be required if a certain percentage of work were being done to the to the property. I don't, I don't know what percentage that is, but in this case, no work is being done at all except to to um enhance some of the safety.
Yeah, so I I I think you've provided most of the information that uh will be required for this, for the relief you're seeking. Um you know, the conditions for the for the. For the green space and the parking, I think those need, probably need to provide more information or. Or, you know, state that uh you will comply and uh. And I I think uh but based on that, I have no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh thank you, Mister Norobe. Uh the chair recognizes Mister McCarthy, Mister McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, um I just have a couple of questions, um to Mister Chairman. I I would like um to understand these uh plans that you sent over. Uh that illustrate the surrounding multifamily um units. So you mentioned three-family and two-family on two of the documents. But the third document strictly says multifamily, and I'm assuming that's not two-family or three-family, that's beyond three-family, is that correct?
It's, that's three and above.
Three-family and above, so it's any three-family or four-family or more, okay.
That's correct.
Um. Well, I I I kind of thought that might be the case, but on the three-family plan, you illustrate three units across the street. Going close to the longer street section. But on the multifamily plan, you don't have those circles.
Oh no, so there's a um. Let me just take a look here, so let me correct, correct what I said earlier, uh Mister McCarthy. So we have exhibit B one is two families in the vicinity. Exhibit B two is three families and exhibit B three is multifamily. So so B three would be four and above, so I had said three and above, it's four and above.
Okay, and and.
So.
Okay, and 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 just to be clear, you've got this address. Highlighted on. All three of them. Not illustrate that it's a two-family, three-family or four-family, it's just it's highlighted on all three of them. But it doesn't really indicate that that's being a. Is that correct?
Well, which one are you referring to?
Okay, uh maybe I'm thinking of the wrong address yet, thirty-six is our address here tonight, right?
No, thirty-two.
Thirty-two is our address, right. So thirty-two is highlighted on the diagram illustrating two families. Thirty-two is highlighted on the diagram illustrating three families. And thirty-two is highlighted on the diagram illustrating multifamilies, right?
Uh. Yes, so thirty-two is highlighted on uh on two families thirty-two. Which is our property is highlighted on three family as well, so yeah, I don't, I. So it looks like it's on the two-family um in error.
And on the beyond three.
Well, although it is, you know, it's it's considered by the city a legal two-family. So we sort of show a whole place.
Just trying to get a sense of the density for the three and four families. By looking at these diagrams, because that's the value that I see these diagrams have.
Right, so behind this property, you'll see that there are, there are, there are two multifamilies that are but the corners.
Which are above three-family, correct?
Yes, correct.
Those are above three-family. And then on the previous document. That states three families, there's three across the street and one, just one other house up the street. That's a three-family.
That's right.
Right.
Which is a fairly small stretch of street there.
No, no, the that that that's the value that I, so I I'm I'm looking at this and I'm seeing. There is a definite um. Uh percentage that's relatively high of three families and above adjacent to the property already.
Right.
In a in a neighborhood that is calling for twelve thousand square foot lots for three families.
Right.
Or sixteen thousand square foot lots.
Right, which is impossible.
Yeah. Which, you know, come on, this is just rough at this point, I don't understand it. But the the other piece that I really like about this uh petition is. That it is um it is. It is set up as a three-family from the get-go. With a front and back stair that is uh gonna be able to meet the requirements of the city with um maybe emergency lighting being added and. Maybe additional pieces, but not not really significant. And then it already has separate kitchens, separate bath, bedrooms that make sense. So they're not squeezing in another unit in a house that's not designed to have three families, that already has. A full-fledged third level in existence.
That's correct, and and as the uh letter from uh Inspector Nigron points out, it's just a, you know, some fairly. Simple safety requirements for uh my client to comply with, uh which he's happy to do.
Um now, George, did you want that to be a condition that the. Um applicant work with the building department to improve the. The uh property to meet a third family requirements?
Yes, sir.
Condition like that, okay.
Yes.
All right. Um I did like the idea of the lot not having a situation that the entire lot was paved. Because that creates a condition where there's no impervious material as it exists today. That influences the surrounding area and creates a strain and stress on the neighborhood, especially the. Downstream properties, if you will, water has to go somewhere.
Right.
So the idea of introducing pervious materials such as gravel or pervious pavers. Um or even pervious asphalt, which allows water to go through it. Um which I think is part of the idea with the um. Uh condition that the planning department was looking to include. Would go a long way to assist in the already overtaxed uh stormwater system in that neighborhood. To uh provide some infiltration on-site.
Well, I don't disagree with you, Mister McCarthy, but I will say that it's existed this way for decades. Um the backyard does get a lot of use from the tenants. My client would be a little bit concerned that, you know, if he puts something back there that's that uh. Isn't, doesn't work with a lot of use, then it may end up getting less used than it actually get. And that's so, that's his concern.
I I do, are you familiar with pervious asphalt?
I am, I have some here at my office and I, you know, it. It actually doesn't look very good, but I understand it does the job. Um so I am familiar with it.
It certainly works for bicycles and grills and.
Yeah.
And patio material. Um I I it doesn't work for, you know, cement trucks. Um unless the subservice is improved, but it really is a very successful tool. Um that I think would help already a very tax. And I I imagine when it was paved, the city probably didn't have the uh systems in place to. Understand the conditions that were being created, maybe, um um or maybe it was paved without the city knowing, I don't know, but. It definitely is a situation we don't, as a board, approve uh typically in a one-hundred percent impervious site. Um. Um. Going for a variance, um and I think that the planning department's condition is not. Out of question, I think that if you can certainly have a usable patio that's. Pervious, it's done all the time, it's done, it really is done all the time.
Yeah, no, I understand that, you know, it is a significant expense to the client, uh but if if the board is going to require it, he'll comply.
It it just is a great asset to the neighborhood to have material on-site that mitigates stormwater. Um because obviously we have a lot of storms these days with climate change that create uh. Situations where water is cascading over properties into basements of adjacent homeowners. And, you know, if they're rental properties, maybe they don't complain, but um it's just a bad thing to do. And I think if we can have some infiltration on the site, as the planning department is suggesting. We help solve that for them.
Okay.
So I really think it's the wisest thing to do for two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, understood, we can uh we can go along with that.
Perfect, perfect. Um and so we have three off-street parking spaces and one off-street on-street parking space. And I know um the city just had a review done in Back Central, in Set Back Central. What do we call this neighborhood?
Back Central.
Back Central, right, so um. It it might, in the future, you might want to um include that document that the city just completed that's a parking study. So that we can understand how the parking is being used in the neighborhood. Um and recognize the um severity or or maybe not severity of on-street parking, um being overused.
Mm-hmm.
But I I, yeah, I thi- I I think it's a a a tool, we we had a grant, we bought it, so we should use it, it'd be great to use. Um I don't know if I agree with it completely, but it's still something we have. But I think in that that we saw, I think um George participated in one of the sessions, um uh Board Member Proko. And um I kind of questioned the validity of some of these conclusions, but in any event, it's a tool we should all be using.
Yeah, I sat in on one of the, uh I think on the Centerville uh parking study and I just, I, you know, it was, it's pretty fresh, so.
Right.
By the time we had submitted our our um application. I'm not sure it was quite ready yet, but in the future, I think you're, I agree with you, it's a good idea. We we can certainly reference it.
Okay. Um that's all I had, I think that this application is incredibly thorough, very well put together. I really enjoyed reviewing it and I want to thank you for the um materials you submitted. And the detail that you brought for us review.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome. No further questions.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Callahan, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you and through you, Mr. Chairman, um, again, Attorney Gary, outstanding presentation, as always, you're always very well prepared and thoroughly, uh, go through everything, um, quite frankly, to think of George's point. Um, I didn't even, I don't, any questions that I had previously, and you pretty much hit them right on your presentation, and I really didn't have anything, uh, you covered all the bases for, so, uh, uh, I, I did have a little bit of concern, as Dennis brought up, about the possibly adding on some, uh, pervious, uh, no, pervious asphalt to try to mitigate some stormwater, uh, if that's possible, but I can understand it's at a expense of your, the, uh, probably a heavy expense to your client, um, but if, if, if we, if it could be done, I think that would probably help, uh, that would help a lot. Uh, but, uh, also like the point, the, uh, the breakdown of the neighborhood as far as, that you've done as far as the multifamilies, the two families, three families and multifamilies, to show, uh, how the layout is in this neighborhood, uh, the PMF phone with all these different, uh, uh, buildings with different number, multi-residential units, uh, really does help demonstrate, uh, the criteria that, uh, you would be able to face, uh, with that choice. Yeah, I don't have any real questions, uh, but, uh, outstanding presentation as always, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Uh, but thank you, Mr. Callahan. Um, you know, I, I, I do agree with my colleague, um, uh, Counselor Gary, uh, very well put together packet, you know, very good narrative. Uh, you, you explained a lot of, you know, essentially everything that, that, that's needed in the details. Um, you know, I, I get the, the project, uh, scope and, you know, I, I think for me at least, um, you're looking to really just make things right in terms of, you know, um, you know, administrative clerical stuff, just to, you know, it's been used as a three family, so just start the right thing and I think, I definitely hear, I think that's probably, that's why, uh, you know, the owner wants to do it now, just to make things right and, you know, I, I, I don't see any, uh, adverse effect to the neighborhood, uh, in terms of, you know, you two to three families, because it's been used as a, as a three family, so it's been like that for at least two decades and now several decades. Um, so I think, uh, for me, I have no concerns and I, I actually think, uh, this would be a good, uh, you know, good addition as well, um, in terms of, uh, extra revenue for the city as well.
Thank you.
That, that being said, um, if we have no other, uh, questions or comments from either the board or, or the applicant, uh, we'll move forward with, uh, with a vote.
Can I just suggest for the, for the condition regarding impervious pavement, that we leave that a little bit open-ended, so my client can work with the city planning department or whoever the appropriate department is to determine what's best. I don't want to necessarily tie him to impervious pavement, if, if pavers might be better and, and more economical. So I'd like to be a little bit general.
I, I.
Mr. McCarthy, uh, are, are you okay with, go, go ahead, sir, Mr. McCarthy, go ahead.
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, um, papers are, um, considered, um, pervious, uh, pervious papers. So pervious pavement, pervious payers.
Pervious, right, yes.
Gravel, they're all solutions, so I think all we're looking to do is to create a condition that says that the impervious material will be removed to be replicated with, um, pervious material.
And possibly to the extent possible, so that, you know, they, the whole back area is paved basically from, from corner to corner, from side to side, so, you know, he may need to, I don't know that he can tear out every piece of pavement, you know, he may have to do a certain area, but again, he can work with the appropriate department to figure that out.
Well, Attorney Gary, if I could through you, Mr. Chairman, you're asking for a lot of relief here with three parking spaces that you don't provide and a lot of area that you're way undersized for. I think the planning department asking you to remove the pavement in the backyard here and replace it with something that is pervious, not a big ask.
No, it's, it's not, it's a, it's a big expense, but, you know, and my client just went through a big expense with his basement. Uh, so, you know, from an economic point of view, it's a big deal to him, but I understand, certainly understand your position and I don't disagree with you. Um, I'm just trying to generalize the condition so he can work with the appropriate department.
Well, um, maybe Francesca, um, is it a five hundred square feet per dwelling unit minimum requirement in this neighborhood? For green space or landscaped area?
I'd have to look that up quickly, hold on one moment.
I believe it is.
And I don't think you're even gonna get to fifteen hundred square feet, you're gonna be well under that.
Correct.
So we already have quite a bit of relief being thought, sought just on that one item alone. I don't think.
Understood.
That with pavers or gravel is a big expense, gravel certainly isn't. I'm, I'm just, I'm just surprised at your unwillingness to, um.
Um, it, don't, don't get me wrong, it's not, it's not an unwillingness, I just, just trying to leave some leeway so that he can, he can decide what the best, you, you know, as I said, he'll, he will agree to do that, but as far as deciding what is the best type of material to put down, you know, he can maybe get some suggestions from the appropriate board.
I, I'm not saying that we're telling you the material, I'm just saying something pervious.
Right, I, I understood, and, and, and he will agree to do that. So I don't mean to belabor the point, I, he will agree to do that.
And, and the condition recommended from the planning board was to remove the impervious material outside of the parking area and replace it with pervious. But I think that that makes a lot of sense, especially. We're not asking you to do pervious asphalt, we're saying just make it pervious.
We can agree to that.
All right, thanks, thank you, Mr. McCarthy, uh, and thank you, Mr. Gary. Um, with, with that being said, uh, I think we're all on the same page in terms of, uh, what's expected and, and the condition. Uh, so, Mr. Callahan, if, if you don't mind, so we could, we'll go forward with, with a vote.
At point of order, Mr. Chairman, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, point of order, actually, uh, Member McCarthy will be handling the first duties.
Uh, he's, he's like that, I, I apologize.
He's taken down all the, the postconditions, so.
All right, I apologize, I strike that.
Uh, I should have mentioned that, I should have mentioned that before.
Nope, no, that, that, that was my, uh, my error. Uh, Mr. McCarthy, if, if you don't mind, sir, uh, the, the motion with, with the condition, uh, we, if you can do that there.
No problem. Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB two thousand twenty-one dash three for variances at thirty-two Wamisit Street, variances for, um, minimum lot size, uh, setbacks, um, minimum lot area and parking relief. But with the two following conditions, that the applicant will work with the building department to improve the structure to provide for three-family use, and number two, that the applicant will remove material in the rear of the site that is not used for parking and provide, yeah, a pervious surface.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by.
Mark, we have seconds to motion.
All right, motion second by Mark, Mr. Bier, um, can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve a condition.
Member Callahan.
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Bier.
Approve with conditions.
Member Proco.
Approve with conditions.
Member Niroge.
Approve with condition.
All right, Mr. Gary, you've been approved with conditions, uh, wish you the best of luck in your project.
Thank you, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to our next, uh, item under new business, uh, DBA dash twenty, twenty-one dash five, a variant, applicant is LePoli Companies LLC, uh, located at three thirty Jackson Street. Um, LePoli Companies LLC seeking advance approval to construct an eight-story, five hundred forty-eight space parking structure at three thirty Jackson Street. The property is in the Hamilton Canal District, uh, the proposal requires variance legally section ten point three point eight three, building form standard for parcel one and another relief under the low zoning ordinance. Um, we did get communication that, uh, this, uh, the request is for continued, does anyone here from, uh, LePoli Companies LLC?
Uh, I'm here, it's Chris Raymond from TEC on behalf of the applicant, LePoli Companies.
Uh, all right, Mr. Raymond, did, did you, um, what did you want to say or tell us before the board or the project, or are you, are you, in fact, in a tenement, just let us know what's going on?
Uh, yeah, we're, so we were, uh, originally scheduled to be on the agenda for tonight, um, but we were unable to meet the city's requirement, um, for the, uh, request for permit sign on site, uh, we ran into some troubles getting that, um, manufactured and erected. Um, that is now, um, been installed on site, um, but, uh, we were unable to meet the appropriate, um, deadline for this meeting, so just looking as a formality to continue that to the meeting, uh, scheduled for March twenty-second.
All right, oh, thanks, thank you, Mr. Raymond. All right, hearing that the applicant, uh, is wishing to continue this matter to our next meeting on March twenty-second, uh, can we have a motion to continue the matter, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA two thousand twenty-one point, uh, dash five for, uh, three thirty Jackson Street to, um, seeking variances for approval to construct an eight-story parking garage to be continued to March twenty-second.
Second by.
Second.
All right, uh, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Callahan, uh, can we have a roll call for the continuance, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve continuance to March twenty-second.
Member Callahan.
Approve continuance to March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Member Bier.
Approve continuance.
Member Proco.
Approve continuance, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Member Niroge.
Approve continuance to March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
All right, uh, Mr. Raymond, um, your, your item, your petition has been continued, uh, we'll see you on March twenty-second, uh, have a good evening.
Thank you very much for your time and we look forward to presenting this project in two weeks' time.
Great.
Thank you. Um, going on to, uh, our next item on the agenda, under other business. Um, so under other business, uh, we have a, a variant extension request at one East Merrimack Street. Uh, the variant extension for a new mixed-use structure at one East Merrimack Street. Uh, the variant expired on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, and the applicant is seeking a one-year extension to February twenty-second, uh, two thousand twenty-two, uh, is there a representative from one East Merrimack Street here this evening?
Yes, there is.
Uh, good evening, sir, could you just, uh, give us your name and address of the record and tell us a little bit about, uh, your request?
My name is Jonathan Miller, I'm from the Daly Group, uh, two twenty-nine Stedman Street, Lowell, Massachusetts, zero and eight five one.
All right, thanks, thank you, sir.
Yes, we're.
Can you just tell us about your request this evening?
So, w- we're working, um, with the city right now, um, with regard to, uh, the revision of the plan, um, to, uh, reset another project, move it closer to East Merrimack Street and, and finalizing details with regard to, uh, some of the improvements, uh, that we're looking to make the David Street parking lot. Um, we should be wrapping that up, um, in the coming weeks. Um, revise plans to the, the planning board, um, in the next, uh, several weeks to a month, um, and then look to move forward with this project. Um, get the extensions for both, uh, Concom, DBA and, and, um, get the planning board reapproval in the next few months so that we can, uh, get this project underway.
All right, uh, thanks, thank you, sir, uh, for your narrative, um. So if it's, um, if, if it's okay with my colleagues in the board, uh, we'll just open up this extension request, uh, to a public hearing and we'll go from there. Um, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this extension request, in favor, in favor? Seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed, um, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this extension request, in opposition? In opposition, uh, seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed, and we're gonna open up questions, uh, and comments to the board. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Bier, uh, Mr. Bier, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman, I'll vote in favor of the extension.
Thank you, Mr. Bier, um, the, the chair recognizes, um, Mr. Niroge.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I have no, I have no objection to the extension, Mr. Vice Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Niroge, uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Proco, Mr. Proco, the floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have any questions, uh, regarding the extension.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Proco, uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Callahan, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, three, Mr. Chairman, um, I don't have any objections to the extension itself, but, um, I'm just looking at the, uh, looking at the request, uh, Mr. Miller, and you're asking for two years, uh, uh, that seems a little, I, I understand, it's a big project, but that seems a lot, a long time, and I don't know where.
The, the.
They've had regretted extensions in excess of one year in the past, so, but I just want to get a sense of what, uh, why the two-year extension.
The, the two-year request, um, relates to, uh, working with the city with regard to the TIF process and working with the state uh, on their, um, state, uh, programs. The application process for that, um, comes and goes, um, on, on a calendar, on a, on a, on a mid-year basis, so, uh, we would not likely be able to get that information, um, to the state, um, for this coming, uh, approval period, and most of those applications are usually in, um, by October or, uh, the following year funding, so the window for that, um, i- is really no longer open, so therefore the two-year would allow us to put the application together, um, in the next several months, so that we would be part of, uh, the next round of funding for those, uh, uh, state and local, uh, programs.
Okay, great.
Um, excuse me, if I may interrupt, Mr. Chairman, um, it's my understanding that variances may only be extended for one year and then special permits for two years, site plan review for three. So I don't believe that it's possible to issue a two-year extension, um, but they may come back after one year to request another extension if they still think that the project won't be underway.
All right, we'll, we'll get, we'll have that one-year extension and look to make that request if, if the application is still in the application, uh, status, um, February of next year.
All right, thank you for providing that information, Fran, and thank you, actually, thank you, Mr. Miller, for breaking down what the, uh, the situation is with regards to the stop, uh, funding from the state, because that actually was very helpful to, would, would, would kind of alleviate my concerns about the two-year request until Fran, uh, rightfully pointed out. So I would, uh, getting back to that, I, I, I would, I would, again, I'm in approval with the extension, um, we can only do one year, so, uh, we'll, we'll just go. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Miller, for, uh, your presentation, very well put together, I wish, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks, thank you, Mr. Callahan, um, the chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy, Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I have a couple of questions, um. Uh, Fran, I'm, I'm not looking at the approval that we provided last year, uh, for the extension, but, um, the approval that we provided two years ago for the extension had the, uh, and I think a minor modification maybe, had, um, a revision from sixty-six units to forty-two units. But now the new documents are asking for forty-five units, is that correct?
That is correct. The revised structure uh is more squared off. Um, it doesn't have, uh, if you recall, we called it like a thumb. It's almost like an L-shaped structure. So the revised footprint of the building, which which brings it closer to East Merrimack Street, uh would be more uh rectangular in shape. Um, and and allow for uh three more units.
Right, okay. And then I think also you're revising the makeup of the retail area. Where you have a one-thousand-square-foot fitness center and a fifteen-hundred-square-foot coffee shop. And I think previously, we had been looking at a retail area that was uh four thousand two hundred seventy square-foot restaurant and a nine hundred, I'm sorry, that was downsized to nine hundred fifteen square feet. So we're going from nine hundred fifteen square feet of retail to twenty-five hundred square feet of retail?
Uh, no, it would, it's, that that space would be uh the coffee shop and the fitness center.
I'm, I'm sorry, um, what we had approved, at least as far as the documents go that we have to review tonight. Nine hundred and fifteen square feet of ground floor, rest front is what it said. But we had not approved twenty-five hundred square feet of retail comprising of a thousand-square-foot fitness center and a fifteen-hundred-square-foot coffee shop. So is this a minor modification as well as an extension?
I believe it, it, to me, it's just an extension.
Um, excuse me, if I may, um, I, they've only applied for a um, an extension. And my understanding is that it sounds like they will be finalizing their changed plans. Um, and then at that time, um, they would need to come before the board for a minor modification. Uh, but right now, what's on the table is a uh, just an extension. That is my understanding of it.
That is correct.
So um, the extension would be for forty-two units and nine hundred and fifteen square feet of retail?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Um, then I I think that I I have the math working. And I can say that I'm in favor of a one-year extension. Thank you very much.
Uh, thanks, thanks. Thanks, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Um, Mr. Miller, I I think for me, uh, you know, I I don't mind granting an extension on this project. Uh, in terms of, you know, what what's needed. I'm sure it's a lot of uh, a lot of, you know, a lot of back work and working with the the different departments. And and you know, others like state agencies. I'm sure it's a, it's a huge endeavor, because this is pretty substantial project. Um, you know, and and thank you, uh, Mr. DeGiana, for for that point of information, that we can only extend uh requests for a year. So for variances, I I do appreciate that. Um, so I I have no, um, you know, I have no objection to this thinking myself. Um, so we, we, if we don't have any other comments or questions um from the board, or if it's nothing else you wanna add, Mr. Miller. Uh, we'll, we'll move forward uh with a vote uh for the extension of this project uh for one year.
I have nothing further than adage. Appreciate your taking this uh under consideration.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Miller. Uh, Mr. McCarthy, if you don't mind, sir, we'll, we'll have a motion to uh, uh, to extend this uh request.
Perfect. Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for um a variance extension request for one E Merrimack Street. Um, and if I could just state that it's for a one-year extension for variance for a forty-two-unit, nine-hundred-and-fifteen-square-foot retail development. Just so that we, because the documents that were presented don't match what actually we accepted, but I think I'd just like to see that stated somewhere.
Yeah, that that makes perfect sense. Thanks, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. All right, uh, motion by Mr. McCarthy for the uh variant extension request, uh, seconded by.
George. Second.
Uh, seconded by Mr. Uh, Proco. Uh, can we have a um, a, a roll call, please?
Uh, Vice Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve uh extension request with uh with the following.
Yeah.
No, I just, I just say an approve the extension request with the following, uh, commenting conditions on that.
Great. Uh, Member Callahan?
Approve extension request for one year.
Member McCarthy?
Approve extension request for one year.
Member Briere?
Prove extension.
Member Proco?
Approve extension request for one year.
Member Naroge?
Prove extension for one year.
Uh, all right, Mr. Miller, your extension request has been approved. Um, have a good evening, sir.
Thank you very much, Board. Most appreciated. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you, you as well. Uh, moving on to our next agenda item under uh other business. Um, another uh variant extension request at nine hundred Chumford Street. Um, the variant extension is for an oversized wall sign for Kronos Incorporated at nine hundred Chumford Street. The variant expired on February tenth, twenty twenty-one, and the Appken is seeking a one-year extension to February tenth, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, is is there a representative from Kronos this evening?
Yes, I'm here, Melanie McVeigh.
Uh, goo- good evening, Ms. McVeigh. Uh, could you just tell us a little bit about um your project and 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 uh about your extension request as well, please?
Sure. So last February, I came before you to request permission for an oversized wall, huh, uh, oversized wall sign to be hung on the building facade of nine hundred Chumford Street. The current sign was recognizing Kronos as the number-one place to work in Massachusetts. We were granted permission to revise the banner, however shortly thereafter, you may have heard about the merger between Kronos and Ultimate Software. And shortly after that, the pandemic reached the U.S. and all of our offices were temporarily closed. Because of these circumstances, we did not have the opportunity to update the sign and put this project on hold. Late summer twenty twenty, we announced our new name, which is U K G, and are now deep in the rebranding process. During this time, U K G was named America's number-two best-large employer headquartered right here in Lowell. While we're still, while we're still reaching out, I'm sorry, we will be reaching out shortly to apply for permit to change the Kronos signs on the building. We'd like to request an extension on the variance for the oversized wall sign and remove, our plan is to remove it and replace it. At the same time, we do the U K G illuminated signs on the building.
Uh, thanks, thank you, Ms. McVeigh, for your narrative uh of of the project. Um, so now, uh, thank you. And so now we'll just open up the the hearing to the public uh for this petition. Uh, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of this extension, in favor. In favor, seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Um, anyone wishing to speak in opposition uh of this extension request? In opposition, opposition, seeing that that hearing of the of the public is closed. Uh, now we'll, we'll open up uh questions and comments to the board. Um, the chair recognizes um, uh, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I don't really have any questions. This seems pretty straightforward. Well, maybe I do have one, one question. Okay, sorry. How long are you, what's the intention? How long are you intending to uh put everything together to come before the board again? For the new signage with regards to the uh new merged uh.
New signage, we're estimating that we'll be applying for permit and in the um approval within the next, I'm I'm estimating two months.
That's, that's, that makes, that makes sense. I just wanted to double check. Uh, but again, this doesn't seem to be a real, real issue.
Thank you.
Be pretty straightforward. I I would uh agree to grant the extension. Ultimately, you're gonna be before us again anyways, which, uh, the new signage, uh, which we're gonna win. For the time being, if the extension does, you know, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Uh, the floor recognizes, uh, excuse me, the the chair recognizes uh Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions. Um, but they really uh kind of circle around the intent of the applicant in the future. Um, you're coming before us to get a special permit um extension for another year. Will we see you in two thousand twenty-two coming before us again for another extension? Is your hope to make this a yearly event, or is this the end of the road for these extensions?
Well, I I mean, hopefully, it's a yearly event, right? We keep placing in the, in the top, you know, top tier of companies to work for. So hopefully, yes, we'll be before you again next year. Um, but that's not something, unfortunately, I I really, I I know for sure.
I I'm all about celebrating the achievements of our local businesses, no question. I just am not all about seeing these large um um elements that don't conform to our signage bylaws decorating our buildings. So um, I I would, I would love to see something that you provide on site that conforms to our zoning bylaws, rather than something that you require a special permit for. Um, so I, as a one member, if I am still on the board next year, will really be questioning the validity of a third extension. Um, I seem to wanna go along with this largely because of the whole COVID piece that we've gone through. Um, and the difficulty with businesses in general with um maintaining staff and wanting to attract staff. So um, I I can see an extension for one year from my side here. But I'm having difficulty seeing this as a yearly event, for sure.
Understood, and I'll share that information with the rest of our team at U K G.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Uh, thanks, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Uh, the chair recognizes uh Mr. Proco. Mr. Proco, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, um, I I don't have any questions. I I think uh it's pretty standard, straightforward, like uh Member Callahan stated.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Proco. Uh, the the chair recognizes uh Mr. Narobe. Mr. Narobe, the floor is yours, sir.
Um, Mr. Mac, yeah, Mr. McCarthy brought up a good point, you know. Um, this temporary permit, uh, this permit is opposed with temporary, not permanent, uh, if it's non-conforming. But uh, I agree, we can, uh, I think we can extend for one year for now, then we'll, we'll reexamine when they reapply again. So I have no objection for now. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Narobe. Uh, the chair recognizes uh Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions. I'd be voting to grant the extension. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, thank you, Mr. Briere. Um, you know, um, Mr. McVeigh, I I hope you heard the wishes of the board. Um, I think, um, at least from from my view or from my perspective, I actually think this is a, a problem, but a good problem to have, if that makes sense. Um, you know, obviously, I I wanna see, and I think everybody wants to see, you know, things that are done uh in terms of in line with our, you know. Uh, with our bylaws and and ordinances and 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 um, and and things like that. Uh, but I I really think this is actually a good problem to have in terms of, uh, you know, uh, uh, a company that's, that's doing well and I'm assuming thriving. And, you know, they're, they're still, you know, um, operating their business in the city below, which is, you know, a great, a great, huge asset to, to the, to the city. Uh, not just economically and financially, but, you know, to, to morale and just to the people in general, knowing that, you know. Even though some other places might be struggling, um, a big company, I guess, is still, you know, uh, operating in the city and and doing very well. Uh, so, you know, I I have no objection to the extension request uh for one year, myself.
Thank you.
Uh, with that being said, um, we have a motion uh, uh, for the extension request.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a variance extension request at nine hundred Chumford Street for a one-year extension for a temporary sign. Um, yes.
Uh, motion by Mr. McCarthy, seconded by.
On three seconds, the motion.
All right, uh, second, uh, the motion seconded by Mr. Briere. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck?
Uh, approve the extension request.
Member Callahan?
Extension request for one year.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the extension request for one year.
Member Briere?
Approve extension.
Member Proco?
Approve the extension request for one year.
Member Naroge?
Approve extension request for one year.
Uh, all right, Mr. McVeigh, you've been uh, been approved for the extension request. Uh, we wish you the best and have a good evening.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the next item, uh, under other business. Uh, another variant extension request at eighty-three Boulevard Street. Uh, the variant extension for the rebuilding of an existing electric substation located at eighty-three Boulevard Street. The variant is due to expire on July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and the Appken is seeking an extension to July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, is there a representative from eighty-three Boule- Boulevard Street here this evening?
You're on mute, sir.
You're muted, Attorney Smith.
I should have this routine down. Can folks hear me now?
Yeah, so, yeah, just tell us your name and address and and a little bit of all your projects, sir.
Sure. Uh, so for the record, my name is Josh Dooly Smith. I am an attorney with uh Law Firm Abadage in Dewey. I'm here tonight representing Massachusetts Alaker Company, which does businesses national grid in connection with this extension request. Um, I had been before this board uh a, a couple of times with respect to the project. And I I'd like to just get, yeah, like to just quick, my summary of, I'm getting a little bit of.
If you're not speaking, if you could just mute yourself, that will help with the, the bounce back of the sound.
Okay.
Apology, go ahead, sir.
All right. Uh, so, as I said, uh, I've been before this board on a couple of occasions with respect to this project. Uh, as the chair had mentioned, this is a, an unmanned electric substation. Uh, it is existing currently. Uh, we came before the board back in twenty nineteen, uh, April eighth, twenty nineteen, requesting two forms of uh zoning relief. One was a special permit with respect to a uh a pre-existing special permit that had been granted back in the nineteen seventies with respect to this uh substation. And the second was a variance with respect to the minimum front, uh, I'm sorry, minimum rear yard setback requirement with respect to the project. Which essentially involved uh the rebuilding of this substation site. Um, so again, that was back in April of twenty nineteen, and the board unanimously granted uh those two forms of relief. Uh, fast forward to uh April eighth, twenty twenty, uh, we had come before the board requesting a minor modification with respect to the project. Uh, this was as a result of uh some um additional information that that my client had received uh from the vendor and from the manufacturer of the various equipment uh that that is contemplated for the project. And so the minor modification involved uh some very minor changes with respect to the layout. Uh, the control building, which is the one building contemplated in connection with the project, uh, was slightly changed, uh, actually made slightly smaller. And uh, the outcome was that this board, again, unanimously granted uh approval of the minor modification. And at that time, the board also had granted a one-year extension of the special permit and the variance. Um, just so to put things into context, and this is sort of similar to, I think, the previous two applicants who had requested extensions. When we had requested the the extension back in twenty twenty, um, we had filed it in around March of twenty twenty. So uh, I'm sure folks uh can understand where I'm going with this. Uh, in and around March of twenty twenty is right when COVID started to hit the world. and um started to hit the U.S. and Massachusetts. But we didn't yet know at that time really what the what the real effect was going to be. Um, so we had requested the extension uh again in March of twenty twenty, and we didn't know exactly when the project would necessarily start, but we had anticipated that it was going to begin in about the spring of twenty twenty-one. And so, fast forward to today, uh, we've been now through uh a year of COVID. And obviously, businesses and families and individuals have been impacted in all different kinds of ways, uh, and and my client is is no exception. My client has certainly felt um the brunt of uh of COVID nineteen in in many, many different respects, both with respect to its internal operations, uh, financial constraints that that it's had as a business, uh, but also it has had uh some major effects with respect to the project. Uh, my client owns and operates uh the transmission lines, uh, distribution lines, substation facilities, uh, generation sites, uh, and and so just to name a few of its uh uh energy-related assets. And many of the projects, once COVID hit, were either uh delayed and and um in some cases canceled some of those projects. Uh, fortunately, with respect to this project, the project was not canceled. Um, it still is a priority of my company. Uh, I'm sorry, of of my clients, my clients with respect to uh making this project happen uh at some point in the near future as in order to uh uh provide the uh reliability that it had uh sought with respect to the rebuilding of this substation site. But it is going to anticipate that the work is going to commence in uh twenty twenty-two. So we are requesting tonight, um, bottom line, a uh another one-year extension. Uh, and so just to let you know, the the current um permits expired July twelfth, twenty twenty-one for the last extension. And so what um my client is now requesting is an extension to July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And again, that's with respect to both the special permit as well as variance.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor Smith, for for your narrative, sir. Um, but now now we're gonna open up the the hearing for this extension request to the public. Um, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor, in favor hearing, um, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, hearing, um, that portion of of the hearing is closed. Um, we're gonna open up questions and comments to the board. Uh, the chair recognizes um Yeah, go ahead. Does someone have a question or comment? All right. Um, so just we're gonna open if uh if if you're not speaking, please uh mute, mute, or turn off your device.
It's a phone number ending in nine eight eight nine. I think that's what's causing that.
All right, so we'll just continue.
Mark, I'm gonna mute you until uh it's your turn.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Leona. I appreciate that. Um, uh, so now we're gonna open questions and comments to the board. Um, the chair recognizes um um, Mr. Proco, Mr. Proco, the floor is yours, sir.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Um, um, just for my edification, can the applicant apply for both permit and variance under the same request?
Uh, I defer to to Mr. Leona. Mr. Gunn, is that is that a um a right by our profit?
Yeah, so if they are requesting a variance or if they're requesting um an extension request of both the special permit and the variance, and the special permit was granted by this um by the zoning board, then the zoning board is authorized to extend it. Um, I guess I'm wondering, is in the narrative for this variance extension, it only mentions a variance. I'm wondering, did they also, I I guess the applicant can clarify whether they had applied for a special permit as well or extension as well, or if they had only applied for a variance extension?
So are are you referring to the the letter that we had just submitted in February?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes. Did it address both a variance and special permit extension it requested?
So in the in the middle, in with respect to the relief that we're requesting uh of the board, uh, I indicated in the letter, MEC requests that both the special permit and the variance be extended to July twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Uh, yes, my apologies. Yes, I I see it. Um, yeah, that's, yeah, I I don't have a problem. I I think it's, you know, send it now that I have my glasses adjusted. Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Uh, thanks, thank you, uh, Mr. Proco, and and thank you for their clarification, uh, uh, Counselor Smith and Mr. Leona. All right, so we'll move forward to uh questions and comments from the board. Uh, the chair recognizes uh Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
I'm muted, Dennis.
There you go. Sorry about that. Three, Mr. Chairman, I I just have a couple of uh minor questions. The intent now, even though we still have COVID, is that we will be able to complete the project within the next year?
Through the through the chair, um, what we are requesting is that the extension be through twenty twenty-two, July of twenty twenty-two. Uh, that's the time in which we anticipate that the the work will commence.
Okay, so you really don't see a problem, even though where we stand today in the world in getting that done?
Well, I think everything is up in the air with respect to the pandemic. I think that's what you're alluding to. Um, the the problem that the company faces as well as developer, I I represent obviously a number of um non-public utility companies as well. So there's there's issues with respect to construction projects pertaining to shortages in labor, uh, materials. Um, and there's all types of different restrictions that sometimes come off, they come on, and it's difficult to predict. Uh, but with now having uh been gone, having gone through sort of the new normal for a number of months now, I think the company has, to some extent, uh, gotten some stabilization with respect to the schedule uh that it has. It's it's sort of done its first uh wave with respect to looking at the projects. And and as I had mentioned before, some of them were delayed, some of them were were continued, some of them a- actually had to go on the fast track, and then some of them were canceled. So they've they've gone through that process, and I think this particular project, uh, from what I know at this point, based on uh my client's review, is that they do anticipate uh this work commencing sometime uh in twenty twenty-two, probably bef- before July twenty twenty-two. I think likely it's going to be in the spring of twenty twenty-two. Um, and so that's that's the timeframe that they anticipate.
Got it. Okay. Well, we look forward to it being uh started in the spring of next year. Okay. Uh, no further questions. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Uh, the the chair recognizes uh Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, I'm muted, I'm muted, uh, Mark.
Okay, I just requested to do that.
Mark, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Uh, Mark Brier, Mr. Chairman, no questions. I'll be voting to grant the extension. Thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. Uh, the the chair recognizes uh Mr. Narobe. Mr. Narobe, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, I think uh the applicant has uh has been starting his presentation. I have no, I have no objection in gr- granting this uh extension.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Narobe. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have any questions. They're considering this seems pretty straightforward. Uh, I'm I'm in favor of granting the extension. Thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Um, just like my colleagues, I don't have any uh concerns or any reservations. It totally makes sense. And and Counselor Smith, you know, your narrative is very uh hot on a why, so it just totally makes sense to me. All right, on seeing all the questions or comments or 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 anything from the board, um, we'll we'll move to uh a motion to uh to approve the extension request.
Three, Mr. Chairman, but I just have a question. Might we taking two votes here, one for special permit and then one for the variance extension? Is that correct, Francesca?
Um, you can just vote in one vote and just issue both.
Okay, absolutely. Okay. Mr. Uh, Chairman, I'd like to take uh uh make a motion for the variance extension request at eighty-three Boulevard Street for a special permit for public utility in suburban neighborhood, single family, for variance for minor for rear yard uh setback uh for a one-year extension to July twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy. Uh, can we have a second? I
George Prokop second.
All right, uh, motion second by Mr. Proco. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Uh, Vice Chairman Peck?
Uh, approve the extension request.
Member Callahan?
Approve extension request for one year.
Member McCarthy?
Prove the extension request for one year.
Uh, Member Brier?
I don't think he's on.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that. Okay. Um, Member Proco?
Approve extension request for one year.
Member Naroge?
Extension request for one year.
All right, uh, Counselor Smith, you've been approved uh for your extension request this evening. Uh, thank you for coming out and have a good evening, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, members. Good evening.
All right, moving on to the next item on our agenda, under other business, uh, we have the minutes for approval for February twenty-second, uh, twenty twenty-one. Um, any common addition uh uh to the um the minutes? All right, seeing none uh by the board, uh, we'll move for a motion to approve the minutes uh for February twenty-second.
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
All right, uh, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by
Second by George.
Uh, second by Mr. Proco. Um, if we have a roll call for the for the minutes, please?
Vice Chairman Peck?
Uh, approve the minute.
Member Callahan?
The minutes for February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Member McCarthy?
Uh, approve the meeting minutes for February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Member Brier?
Proco.
Member Proco?
Prove minutes for February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Member Naroge?
Prove minutes for February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
All right, the minutes uh have been approved. Um, if we have no other questions or comments by the board, uh, we'll I'll go ahead. Mr. McCarthy, go ahead. The floor is yours, sir.
Uh, I I don't mean to make a bad habit of keep having these things come up, but I um I participated in the parking study that uh the planning department ran um for the city, and I was wondering if we could get from the planning department some kind of synopsis or report on that parking study for the neighborhood. Um, this this circulate to the uh board members to help us understand come before us, looking for parking relief.
Absolutely. Um, once we have a report or we have materials to circulate, we're still in the process of doing um you know, analyzing the findings from the the public meetings that we've had, but once we have materials, we will certainly circulate them to uh the zoning board.
I really appreciate it just doing that. I think that it really helps us as a board just to understand where the stresses are um and and to have a study that illustrates um where the issues might be in individual neighborhoods, I think is really helpful. So thank you for doing that.
All right, oh, thanks, thanks. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, and thank you, Mr. Leona, for that update as well. Uh, appreciate it. Um, if if we have no more um comments or any uh questions, uh, we'll we'll move for a a motion to adjourn.
Three, Mr. Chairman, do you want Mr. Chairman to like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn.
Callahan, second.
Uh, second motion by Mr. Callahan. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, you folks, same day, the aye, have it. All right, uh, have a good evening, folks, and be safe out there.
All right. Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone.
Thank you.
Good to see you in the green. You're black, white, and the green, George.
You will.
Have a good one, guys.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye.